We are back in session. The next item on the agenda is item number six, approval of resolution number nineteen dash fifty-four, approving the extension of present boundaries of the city of Watertown, South Dakota, and annexation of a contiguous tract of land to be known as Dunn Second Edition. Motion by Y and a second by Lalum. And we'll begin this with a little rundown by Heath and then I'll open the public hearing.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the resolution to annex the property that was just discussed thoroughly as far as the zoning to C three. Same property limits we're talking about as the last action and we didn't entertain any questions pertaining to this item. To note, this was recommended by approval by the planning commission by a vote of seven to zero in regard specifically to the annexation motion.
All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone is here to speak about this item, please come forward. See, no one. I will close the public hearing and entertain discussion from the council. Does anyone have any questions about this? We just spent a long time debating how to zone this once it's annexed. Not seeing any questions, so I'll call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item seven is the second reading of ordinance number nineteen dash sixteen, a zoning text amendment to chapter twenty-one point zero-five, establishment of districts of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown, amending the overlay district list to include the DT Downtown Overlay District. A motion by Lalum and a second by Manti. And I would like Heath to explain this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading and as discussed in the first reading, this is kind of a housekeeping item pertaining to the Downtown Overlay District that was recently created. In the creation of that district, it was simply omitted from the list of districts in the zoning ordinance and that's what this action will do is add it to that list of zoning districts, overlay districts in the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Heath. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak about this item? See, no one. I will close the public hearing and entertain council discussion. Councilman Lalum, did you have?
I did not.
Oh, okay. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item eight is second reading of ordinance number nineteen dash seventeen, a zoning text amendment to chapter twenty-one point three-two, light industrial district of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown, allowing caretakers residences from a permitted use to a conditional use. A motion by Lalum and a second by Hollein. And I'd like Heath to explain this to us.
Thank you, Mayor. This zoning text amendment does pertain specifically to the I-1 light industrial district and as again discussed on the first reading, currently caretaker's residence is a permitted use in the I-1 district. This amendment would change that and create it as a conditional use. Some of the thought and logic behind this at the staff level and what the planning commission agreed on is that this is kind of a life safety component where we felt it was appropriate that the BOA have a check off on any residences in our I-1 district per the conditional use process and help prevent any residency from being taken up without the emergency responders' knowledge of that. So that BOA action would then theoretically have a process in place so the emergency response teams throughout the community would be aware of any residences in the industrial I-1 zone. We entertain any questions from the council?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to do the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. If anyone is here to speak about this item, please come forward. I don't see anyone, so I will close the public hearing and look for council discussion. Councilman Lalum?
Heath, can you just give us a brief area that the I-1 covers? As far as where it's related in the community, like is it industrial? It's not obviously heavy industrial, but where's the light industrial for the most part located in Watertown?
Good question, Councilman Lalum. I believe it is spread at several locations throughout. You know, there's a good focus of it. Excuse me, in the southern part of town, kind of south of Highway two twelve. And as you go out east and on the far east side of town, there's a large area of I-1 out there. I do have the zoning map on my computer if you care to see that pulled up on the screen.
I'd just like people to kind of be aware of where it is and what is light industrial versus maybe heavy industrial.
Yeah, and the answer to that could get pretty lengthy just based on the extent of differential uses within there and comparison of an I-1 to I-2.
It's pretty dark there.
Is it up there?
Are you plugged in?
How about now?
It flashed a little bit. There it is.
There it's coming. So I'll try to, I can't, I apologize if I can't see it.
Light and dark purple is industrial. Light industrial's the light purple.
So it looks like it's mostly to the west along, say, Third Avenue, north down to Fourth Avenue, southwest?
On the east side of town.
On the west side and then on the south side it's down towards past eighty-one or two twelve, excuse me?
Yep, airport.
Airport. That's all light industrial, correct?
Correct.
Sorry for the tough questions.
Any other questions or comments, council? All right, see none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item nine is approval of resolution number nineteen dash fifty-seven, providing for the vacation of a portion of the thirty-foot dedicated public right-of-way lying adjacent to lot eight of block three of Watertown Development Company addition. I have a motion by Villhauer and a second by Albertson. And I'd like Heath to give us an explanation.
Thank you, Mayor. The owner of the property, Terex South Dakota Incorporated, has submitted a petition to vacate a portion of the thirty-foot dedicated right-of-way that currently exists and separates two parcels that are owned by Terex. The right-of-way is currently unimproved and there are no utilities within it. The budding parcels on each side of the right-of-way are currently under the same ownership. The parcels would need to be platted in the future for a building permit issuance. I believe they're just legally described at this point in unplatted parcels. The parcels would not be affected from the proposed vacation as they do have sufficient frontage onto Twenty-first Street Southwest. So we would not be vacating a right-of-way that they would have otherwise had access to or needed access to because they do have that access onto Twenty-first Street Southwest that currently exists. This was recommended for a split vote approval by the planning commission as a vote of five to two on their December fifth meeting. And myself, or the city planner, helped answer any questions on this.
Heath, did this go through the vacation process checklist that we have? With meeting all of the bullet points that we have? I know Brandy has a checklist for that.
Yes, yes, it has, Madam Mayor. We do have a protocol that you're referencing as far as the process that we undertake for any right-of-way vacate and that's what Brandy has utilized as a tool to make sure that all the appropriate check-offs are made.
All right, thank you. Counsel, are there any questions? Councilman Villhauer?
Heath, maybe you explained it, but I know it was a topic of discussion at the planning commission meeting. Why is the parcel or the strip immediately to the, I guess, east or northeast running up to Nineteenth Street? Why is that not being vacated?
The simple answer to that, Councilman Villhauer, is that they were not privy as one of the applicants to the vacate. The city didn't, the city staff, I should say, excuse me, did not see it necessary to require them, being one of the applicants, for the vacate. We think that there is maybe even, per the planning commission meeting discussion, we think there is warrants to keep that strip of right-of-way depending on how those properties of the east would sell or develop. Because the southerly portion of those easterly properties does not abut a public right-of-way, that strip to the east is the only portion of right-of-way that they do abut. So it might be worthy of keeping that right-of-way to the east, at least for the time being.
Okay, thank you.
And I need to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak about this issue? So please come forward. See, no one. I'll close the public hearing. Are there further questions or comments by the council? Councilman Lalum?
Heath, could you tell us why that was a split vote? Was there any reasoning for that?
You know, I would defer to the city planner if she recalled. I don't recall any real specific discussions on why the no votes, the two that we have received. Do you recall, Brandy?
I believe it was just confusion over including the adjacent property owner on the vacation petition. And then I, you know, we explained it, we walked through it on how we got there and I'm still, I'm not sure why they voted no. I think it was confusion on why we were leaving that.
Sounds good.
All right, any other questions or comments? See, none. I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number ten is approval of resolution number nineteen dash fifty-five, adopting the Lake Kempeaska Master Plan. I have a motion by Hollein and a second by Bueller. Heath?
Thank you, Mayor. So as you heard in the Public Works Committee meeting this evening, a demonstration or discussion, I should say, on the Lake Kempeaska Master Plan final draft. Our consultants, Confluence and IDG are with us here this evening. John and Vanessa representing those two companies that worked closely with us and with the Lake Kempeaska Master Plan Study Group that was established. I would also like to recognize Roger Foot. He was our project manager in-house on this project and he's here as well this evening. But we've gone through a presentation at the planning commission level, a presentation now at the council Public Works Committee meeting and we've got the final draft before the council and this is just a formal action item to adopt this plan. I would remind the council, it's not a formal adoption in the sense of the comprehensive land use plan but more the adoption of a steering document or a guide document as is our master transportation plans or things of that nature.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? There's no public hearing? Councilman Lalum?
It's a very in-depth document. Hopefully, you know, I know that we don't have a chance to go through it at the council level, but if they watched the previous meeting, they would be able to go through. There's some very big items in there potential that we can do and hopefully we can start moving forward with some of those. But if you look at it, it's a very labor slash financial investment that would have to be done to it. So hopefully people can take a look at that and see and we can use it as a working document for years to come.
Right, that's the idea. Thank you. Councilman Hollein?
Thank you. I just wanted to say I read it. I really liked it. I thought that they did a very good job taking in a lot of considerations. Even they took questions that were directly confrontational against what they were doing and they answered them in a very level-headed, very thoughtful process. I applaud them for that. I've always wanted a master plan at Kempeaska. We finally got one. I will just say, in lieu of the conversation that we had earlier tonight, I would like to see moving forward on the new zoning classifications that is recommended in the master plan. With that said, I'm all in favor of it.
All right, thank you. Yes, Councilman Villhauer?
I've got a question of John and Vanessa. I mean, are you done now as far as your service to us or now that we've adopted or what, where do you stand in this?
We're always available for rezones. No. With approval of this, yeah, that ends our formal work. Obviously, we're going to be accessible for updates to graphics, continued coordination with Public Works and with Roger. So I don't consider our contractual work to be done, but you know, these types of plans, there's always some ongoing stuff that continues.
Well, thank you for getting the public input that you did and I think that was critical and the product that you turned out is getting that public input from the very beginning.
Agreed.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eleven is the two thousand nineteen budget supplements. And we have three separate items here, A, B, and C. And I will ask Kristin to go through each of these one at a time and we'll take action after each item. So starting with A, which is ordinance number nineteen dash fifteen, supplemental appropriations.
So?
I have a motion by Manti and a second by Villhauer. And I'd like Kristin to give us an explanation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading of the budget supplement ordinance. This is something that we tend to have to do every year at this time. The supplements are two thousand nineteen budget. I did run through all the numbers at the first reading. There was two minor changes to it. There was a couple other contract items that were caught, so I will just cover those. The first one is in the street department under the general fund. The street improvements, which is actually our special assessments, there was an additional ten thousand dollars needed. So that went from eighty thousand to ninety thousand. That is an assessment project. And then the other thing is under the capital improvement sales tax fund for the Missland and Storm sewer project, there was a twelve thousand dollar increase necessary for an IDG contract. That was for design. So those are the only changes from the first reading, very minor changes. So this does supplement the two thousand nineteen budget. I do want to point out again that there is quite a hefty addition under the snow removal. Fingers still crossed that is not necessary. The other big thing in the general fund was for the flood supplies and materials. That was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So I can answer any questions. Otherwise with this, it will increase the two thousand nineteen budget.
Councilman Lalum?
Kristin, if we were to get reimbursed by that, when would that come in from FEMA?
It'll take a while. We're still actually in the process of going over there. Right now, I know, working with Chris, the Assistant Finance Officer and we're making sure all the timesheets and all that ties out. So it's quite a process. We won't see it until probably, I would say, almost the end of mid to end of two thousand twenty.
Okay.
Councilman Villhauer?
Just a couple of comments. I raised the point a couple of weeks ago that it seemed like a lot that we're making an additional appropriation for. I guess I would like to say two things. One is you say it's indispensable functions and I mean, that is a true statement from my understanding of what this is. And secondly, most of these items were items that we had discussed at some point throughout the year and it weighed in. So it's not like you're hitting it cold with all these dollar amounts that we're seeing now.
That is correct. And I will point out that a number of the ones in the general fund were also because of donations that were taken in. The next two items are allowable to do because of the grant and the insurance aspect, but a lot of these other ones were donations. So the money was there and thus it was spent.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor signify by, oh, sorry, Michael.
Sorry, it's a goofy one with flooding and stuff. Have we looked ahead at all into how much it would cost just to buy HESCOs? Just to keep so we don't have to play the rental game? I imagine that we'll have flooding again in the future at some point. I don't know if that's a worthy investment.
Heath, you want to answer that, please?
Certainly, Councilman Hoyer. You know, the cost for the HESCOs this last go-around and I believe all the previous go-arounds where they've been installed was bore by the Corps of Engineers. That being said, you know, we have not looked at, at least the engineering office has not looked at pricing those out to purchase any. That cost does get paid for by the Corps of Engineers. It's still taxpayers' money that's getting utilized for that expense at the federal level. So I do acknowledge that, but no, we have not estimated any cost for purchasing those.
I would say if the Corps of Engineer has it, we'll let them have it. They can manage it if that's how you do it.
Yeah. Anyone else? Kristin?
I will add something to that piece too with the flood supplies and materials. The majority of that is actually the rental for all the pumps for the lift stations. And so I would, I think, almost eighty thousand is for those, the generators for the pumps. So I don't know if that's one that we can really probably get away from because I think Mike brought in like twenty-three to make sure that the pumps were going. So I did want to clarify that.
Right. We don't want to buy those, no. They'd sit in the closet years at a time and then we'd use them a couple of years in a row. Anything else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item B is grants, revenue, and expenditures automatic supplements. Motion by Lalum and a second by Robie. And Kristin, you can tell us about this, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is what we call an automatic supplement. This is where throughout the year, the different departments have received grant funding and then in turn spent what it was for. It's kind of all shown there. If there's any specific questions, I can try to answer them, but these all would have went through that same normal process due where they were authorized to apply, authorized to accept the award and basically this is where we sit to make the numbers work at the end of the year.
Thank you. Any comments, staff or council? See, none. I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item C is insurance reimbursement automatic supplements. Motion by Hoyer and a second by Lalum. Kristin?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This one is one that we don't actually often see, but this is also considered an automatic supplement. This is for, I think if everybody remembers, our large hail claim. Some of this work is finally getting completed just due to the weather and the timing. So the majority, well, not the majority, all of it, is for the roof repairs that were necessary throughout the city in the different parks, facilities. So the total there does come to one forty-three, one hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. And I know Terry Kelly is here. If there's any specific questions, the majority of this work is completed. A little bit of this was put into the capital aspect and potentially will be carried over into two thousand twenty. I think there's a couple roofs that just timing-wise didn't fit into the schedule to be completed. But this supplements the budget and the revenue was there from the claim.
All right, any questions, council? See, none. I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Kristin. Item twelve is approval of resolution number nineteen dash fifty-six, authorizing the mayor to sign the bridge improvement grant, BIG, application for the Third Avenue Northwest Bridge Replacement, project number seventeen oh six. I have a motion by Albertson and a second by Y. And I would like Heath to tell us about this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Our consultant engineering design group, IDG, from right here in Watertown is assisting the city in applying for a bridge improvement grant for the Third Avenue Northwest Bridge. Several of you are very familiar with this grant application process. You've seen this grant application come in front of you in two thousand seventeen to assist with engineering costs. Unfortunately, at that time, we were not awarded that grant. We have since anticipated applying in two thousand twenty with a complete set of design plans and some of you may remember that discussion from last year as well. However, our design consultant, IDG, was tasked with addressing a technical memo from the DOT that required them to do some further investigation and a scour analysis. What that did by meeting those requirements that the DOT required of us, it did push back the final design, the completion of the design work. So what we're faced with today, where we're at, is if you approve this application for the grant, we will submit that by the January second deadline. We'll go through the approval process that the DOT vets out in peer and our bridge score this year is sitting at fifty-two point seven four. Now, there are no guarantees, of course, but that is a very high score in comparison to some of the bridges that were awarded funding last year. So the consultant and staff feel that we're sitting fairly favorable to receive a grant now through this process. If that is awarded, I believe, which comes out in the May timeline, is that right Vanessa? April, May? If we are awarded, what then would happen is we would proceed down the DOT path of their processes to continue to review and approve the final plans and then go through the bidding process with the DOT. And that would happen sometime in fall of two thousand twenty. So unfortunately, where we're at today, we had programmed this thing and budgeted for it to start construction in two thousand twenty, but the timeline now looks like that's going to get slid because of that delay and the necessary delay in the completion of the final design. That construction is going to get slid into two thousand twenty-one. But also to note, we just completed our bridge inspection report from two thousand nineteen. This structure was one of those that was analyzed this last year on our annual bridge inspections. Vanessa too performed that work. And you know, we're happy to report that the bridge is structurally sufficient to provide another year of service to the community. There aren't any concerns with that in mind. Keeping it posted with the weight limits that are out there right now, we do feel it is adequately structurally to get us through another year.
All right, thank you. Questions, council? Councilman Way?
So if this is slated for two thousand twenty-one to be reconstructed, that's also when Highway two twelve will be reconstructed, the other half, correct? And with this being one of two, or you know, a major artery through Watertown, Third Avenue and two twelve, do we see any conflicts there with traffic flow through Watertown?
Well, with two twelve being diverted, yes. I mean, there's, it would be unfortunate, but there's enough routes around. The traffic wouldn't have been routed up to Third for two twelve. It'll take other routes, probably Fourth Avenue South. And so I don't think that'd be a huge impact. Do you want to comment on that, Heath?
No, and I would agree with that mindset that I think that the detour routing, with or without the third construction, probably wouldn't have contemplated Third to begin with. So I think you're on the right track there. I don't know, Vanessa, if you have any other thoughts to that as far as impacts with the two twelve work going on in phase two?
Not much more. Our detour route for this will be on Kemp for the majority of local traffic. And the nice thing is, from the onset, our goal was not to have two river crossings down at the same time. So I guess we accomplished that with the delay in the tech memo, not a good thing, but.
You're assuming that the two twelve bridge will be open by then. Councilman Robie?
Thank you. The phase two is going to be east of eighty-one.
East of eighty-one.
So I think it's a valid question, but I think that there's not that much traffic going there. I think we'll be fine.
Yeah. All right, other questions or comments? All right, look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Vanessa. Thank you. Item thirteen is approval of addendum to airport ground lease with GMR Aviation LLC.
So move.
Second.
By Albertson and a second by, was it Rademski? Rademski. And I'll ask Matt to tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor. In August, the council approved a ground lease at the airport with GMR Aviation. The original lease contemplated that the lessee would be utilizing forty-five hundred square feet of space at the airport. Our leases are based on the square footage footprint that they utilize for their building. And they changed their mind essentially and reduced the square footage of their building to thirty-six hundred square feet. So this addendum reflects thirty-six hundred square foot building, sixty by sixty rather than forty-five hundred square feet, sixty by seventy-five as the original lease stated.
All right, thank you. Any questions, council? Councilman Lalum?
Matt, on these, is that sixty by seventy-five, that must have been just a different size than what's normally altered? Most of them sixty by sixty?
There are a couple others that are sixty by sixty, but there's also one that's ten thousand square feet. So there's varying sizes.
So that's not uncommon that we have a different size then?
Right, so these are the ones where the private owners build their own buildings. So if, you know, they build it to the spec that they need and if there's room for us to lease it to them, then we do so. So I think there's two others that have thirty-six hundred square feet, but like I said, Yoast Aviations is ten thousand four hundred square feet, just off the top of my head. I know there's LATIs is a number that's escaping me, but it's not thirty-six hundred square feet.
Okay.
Larger than that.
So it's not uncommon for them to have multiple. So it's, it's not uncommon for them to have multiple different sizes or something? Have a requirement that has to be this size or anything of that nature?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? We, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item fourteen is Authorization for Renewal of Airport Liability Insurance Policy for twenty twenty and for the finance officer to issue a special check for the premium. Motion by Lalum. Second by Holene. And Kristen, please explain this to us.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Before you is the Airport Liability Insurance. This comes at this time every year. Um, with this authorization, I will do the special check at the very first date of the year. Um, I will say that, um, it was quite a, quite a jump from the previous one, about seventeen hundred dollar increase. With that being said, I know part of the attachment that was sent and attached to the agenda goes over kind of what the airport insurance is looking like and that it's going up all over, so we are part of that group. I will say that there was fourteen requests, um, to give us a, a dollar amount sent out. There was eleven no responses and two declined, and this was our offer on the table. With that too, I should have included, um, we might have to amend the motion or add to the motion. In the past, we have never accepted to purchase the, um, I don't know what it's specific, yeah, the terrorism coverage. So I would assume that the council would, um, not take that as well.
If the council's interested, they'll have to amend the motion is what you're saying.
Otherwise, otherwise it would be this, the flat seven thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars for the annual premium.
But what did you say it was in the past?
Um, last year it was five thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. So it was a, it was an increase.
Yep. Councilman Lalum?
Kristen, do you remember what it was the year before? I mean, did we, didn't we go down last year and then went up?
No, you're thinking of ours, uh, South Dakota Public Insurance Lines, our liability coverage, um, throughout the city. This is its own separate policy.
Just for the airport.
Just the airport, yep.
And we need it, so it's not like you can't have insurance.
And I, and I will say too, there was no changes to the actual policy itself. All the coverage is still exactly the same, so.
Councilman Villahower?
Kristen, why, why is Sun Country Airlines an additional, named additional insured?
Um, they've always been on there. I think that's if they ever do the charter. That's the charter one. That's kind of a requirement, so it, it was on there last year too. Like I said, this is pretty much our standard.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item fifteen is Authorization for the Fire Department to Purchase a Replacement Ambulance. Budget Supplement Required in Twenty Twenty. A motion by Lalum and a second by Holene. And I see Don is here, so, um, I'll take it away, Don Rowland, Assistant Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. Well, I'm here tonight to ask permission to replace a ambulance that unfortunately was a total loss on November twenty-sixth on a interfacility transfer on the interstate. Fortunately enough, patient and, and our medic crew were fine during that accident. But we did have a total loss because the ambulance actually went kind of airborne and into the median and actually bent the frame. The, uh, the appraisal value on that ambulance is around thirteen thousand dollars. The cost to fix it was almost double that, so uh, they did, the adjuster did a total loss on that ambulance. So I'm here tonight to, uh, ask for replacement dollars. Uh, those dollars would come from a supplement in twenty twenty after the ambulance is delivered in March, April range at some point. So that'll be a two twelve supplement that would happen, uh, for, we did have this actually appropriated in twenty twenty-one, long-term capital, uh, funds of amount of two hundred thousand dollars. So I kind of go through the quote tab that you see up there on the, the screen there. Uh, this would be through our same company that we buy the ambulance from. It is a remount ambulance, Bruce, so I want you to know that as well. The, uh, the ambulance company, Horton, actually manufactures these in Ohio, uh, but the company that does the remount is in North Carolina. So this ambulance will be put on a flatbed, taken to, uh, North Carolina, uh, right real shortly actually, uh, if it's approved here. Uh, the cost to remount the ambulance is one forty-two, uh, nine hundred and eighty-four thousand. Uh, we do have equipment that's on this ambulance. It was a two thousand nine, so it was going to be in that ten-year range already for replacement along with the equipment. And with the, uh, the, the two hundred thousand dollars, that was part of the equipment cost as well. And the equipment costs are the LifePack cardiac monitor, it's the power cot, it's the stair stretcher, so you're talking around fifty-two thousand dollars in equipment that goes on this essential, uh, lifesaving ambulance. Uh, the digital radio is in that thirty-two hundred range with a grand total of a hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. So again, like I said, this does come with that appropriated funds that we were going to be using in twenty-one. One thing I'll add is the next ambulance will not, uh, be replaced again until twenty twenty-three, uh, is when the, the next one will be, uh, re- replaced, so. Black ice permitting, unfortunately.
We do have a loner, right?
We do, we, we did get, uh, I called up to the, the dealer for us in Fergus Falls, Minnesota. And, uh, the same day that I called them, they were offering us a free loner for a while, but of course, they know that, that we need to fix our current ambulance too, so.
Right. Councilman Hoyer?
Just for clarity, that's what it was, was black ice?
Yes.
Did that cost it? Okay.
Yes.
Glad everyone's all right.
Yep, we are too. That was the first thing when they called me, like five minutes after it happened, the first thing I said, is everybody okay? And he said, yes. And I was like, okay, well they're calling the wrecker. And then they had to call another ambulance, of course, too, so.
Councilman Lalum?
Two things, uh, will your crew get a set of wings then for getting airborne on that?
Would you pin, would you pin them on?
I would pin them actually, as a matter of fact, that would be awesome.
Maybe, maybe at a next advisory meeting we'll do that.
Okay, uh, second question is for Kristen. How does this fit as far as our, our budgeting and things of that nature? Obviously, we're going to have to move from capital improvement up a year, so that's a, obviously a big jump.
Yeah, I, I will say the, the piece that is nice is, um, this will come out of Fund two twelve and not the general fund, which can sustain this. And, um, with it not then being purchased in twenty twenty-one, it's not such a significant jump. It was pretty much already planned in twenty twenty-one. So we should be okay. And this action that you're giving tonight is just gives Don the authority to go ahead and get it ordered. So I will be coming back to you probably in January, February to supplement that budget right away so that it's just not forgotten until December.
Kristen, we do get a thirteen thousand dollar insurance check too, right?
Yes.
So a little less than one ninety-eight. Councilman Y?
So the price quote for the ambulance equipment, the life monitor pack, power cot, things like that, those are things you can't take out of the old ambulance, or are they just too old?
They're too old, yeah. Old, they have to be replaced. Yep.
And that was, that was originally proposed in that twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
That, oh, one more question. The remainder, or so that old equipment then, uh, like the power cot and stuff, can you give that to another township or to Lake?
Sometimes what we do is we try to, uh, work with Lake Area Tech, the midfire program, where they're able to utilize some of this, but again, they don't even want some of the ten-plus year old equipment because then you, you know, the medics that are learning, they need to have up-to-date equipment as well, so. Sometimes we use it for training if we can, but, uh, generally speaking, there's no value to that, Josh, so.
Councilman Bueller?
Hey, Don. What, how old is that power cot?
Uh, the power cot's ten years old.
Ten?
Yep.
Well, I don't know. I hope, I don't want something with bad hydraulics.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Yep.
Item sixteen is Authorization for the HR Director to Hire the Administrative Assistant to the Mayor and City Attorney at a salary of forty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars, twenty cents. To motion by Villahower? Second by Lalum. And I see Jelaine, if I please, here to tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm very excited to announce that we have offered and the candidate has accepted and signed, um, a potential salary of forty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents. So she's excited. We had a great round of candidates. We had about twenty applicants. We ended up, uh, interviewing six of them. It was a very tough choice, but I think we made the right decision.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Councilman Villahower?
I'll, I'll just say I was part of that, that interviewing process of the finalists and boy, we did have some top-notch that, uh, there were a number of them that I think would have done a great job for us, but we did get our number one, uh, pick.
I'd like to hire them all. Oh, yeah.
For sure.
Yes, Councilman Y?
Does this salary reflect our wage study?
Yes, it does.
And is that an increase or?
Yes.
It is an increase from what the current wage, otherwise we wouldn't have needed your.
When will she start?
Um, she gave a thirty-day notice to her employer, so her prospective start date is January thirteenth.
Matt, did you have something?
I was just gonna, uh, mention what Josh just asked about, that the salary is consistent with step one of the new wage scale.
All right. Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Jelaine. Item number seventeen is Authorization for the Police Department to Hire One Full-Time E-nine-one-one Dispatcher. Motion by Lalum and a second by Holene. And I see we have Officer Remmers and Chief McPeak here to tell us about this.
Thank you. I don't know, he's got, he wants to say something first. At the risk of, uh, hey, let me tell a quick story first. I got to finish the story with, uh, Don's ambulance and the sliding off the road. November twenty-sixth, blizzard down by Esteline. At that same moment, we were delivering a baby over the phone at a residence in Esteline. One of the dispatchers was. Only by sheer luck, Don ended up having two ALS, you know, advanced medic crews near Esteline. And because that second crew was there, they assisted in the delivery of the, the baby at a residence in Esteline. That family wasn't getting to the hospital in Watertown. So it was kind of a, they went in the ditch, yes, but they had two crews right outside Esteline to help deliver a baby, so.
So they could get wings and a diaper bin?
Yes. Perfect. All right. Well, thanks all of you tonight. I, I appreciate Kristen putting us last on the agenda. Thank you, Kristen.
It's because the airport guys aren't here.
Exactly. So just real quick, um, as you know, we had some retirements this year, and so, um, I promoted, uh, Kirk Ellis to captain. He's going to talk to you in a minute about some vehicles. And I asked Ryan to take over the nine-one-one center for us. Throughout the course of last year, towards the end of last year and the beginning of this year, we had some issues with staffing in there. We had, we had twelve full-time dispatchers at one time. We're down to eleven now. We have four, I believe it is, part-timers. Well, we lost one of those and we promoted one when a position left, so Ryan came to me and he says, it just doesn't look like it's working. I says, we'll put some numbers together, do some studies, visit with Kristen, and let's go see what council has to say about it. So let's see what Ryan's got to say about it. We added the twelve full-time positions back in two thousand and nine, and since then, we've added two part-time positions. And then in, uh, April of two thousand eighteen, one of our longtime dispatchers retired, and instead of filling that position with a, another full-time, instead of continuing to go with twelve full-time people, we brought on two more part-time people. So as of April two thousand eighteen, we had eleven full-time and four part-time. Uh, we tried that for, well, what is that, about eighteen months now, maybe twenty months since, uh, April of two thousand eighteen. We've essentially had a revolving door with people staying for about four months and then leaving. We've hired seven, uh, new part-time people since April of two thousand, um, eighteen. And they stay long enough to almost get trained in and then they quit. So what we want to do is put it back to the way it was, where it was twelve full-time people and continue with the two part-times. So what we're asking for is the, we want the twelfth full-time dispatcher back and we want to give up the two part-time dispatchers. This, uh, according to Kristen's math, um, at present, we're projected to have a budget of eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars in our total personnel expenses. This would take that from eight twelve up to eight twenty-three. So it adds, uh, it adds about, uh, what, twelve or thirteen thousand dollars to our, our budget, but it's still under the eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's allowable in our personnel line for next year. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Councilman Lalum?
Ryan, um, are the, do you have a part-timer now that you're looking to move to full-time? Is that the plan or will you be hiring someone new?
We, we have three part-time positions right now. One of those part-time positions has expressed no interest at all. She, in fact, she says she likes working part-time.
Okay.
The other two have expressed interest in working full-time. So it wouldn't necessarily be us terminating any, any existing part-time people. We would most likely be, of course, it would be open to anybody that would apply, but it makes logical sense that, uh, the two people that are fully trained in, one of those two people would become a full-time dispatcher. They are both still on an eligibility list from last spring too.
Very good. Councilman Hoyer?
I'll just toss out, if we make a full-time position, it's very likely that we're going to maintain them a lot longer because just looking at most hiring, whenever you do part-time, you're almost making a loss in a way, just one level of training. Having to retrain somebody all the time is a mess, so if we can do it right, get a full-time position, we've had one in the past, that sounds great to me.
True. To further that point, since two thousand fifteen, we've hired eleven part-time people and three full-time people. One of those, or we've lost three full-time people. And one of those was retirement that I mentioned there in April of two thousand eighteen, so eleven part-timers to two essentially, uh, full-time people that have left.
Yeah. Councilman Bueller?
You know, I think in the long run, uh, too, I think that's going to save us money for training. I mean, when you're retraining people all the time like that, but I do have, I mean, outside of the fact that that's going to happen more commonly, I think, with part-time people, why, why do you think we're having that turnover?
It's a mixture, I think, of the schedule, the shift schedule that they're being asked to work, um, you know, it bounces around. It's, there's nothing consistent about it. And it's, it is a stressful job. It's, uh, working weird hours, um, as you, I was just talking about with delivering babies over the telephone and, and much more stressful calls than that. Um, and to be thrown into that with, without it being a true career choice, but it's, uh, you know, maybe in a part-time position, it's more of a, hey, I'll do this to get by. Um, the, the other twelve or the other eleven full-time dispatchers, it is truly a career for them and they take very much pride in their work.
Councilman Y?
Couple of questions. Um, with the twelve dispatchers that you have, are they all on-the-floor dispatchers or is that some administration too?
They are all on-the-floor dispatchers. Three of them or one per daypart shift are supervisors or lead communications officers. But they're all dispatchers.
And then what's the, the starting salary for, for this position that you would hire into?
We're a little bit in between right now. As you know, we're currently still in negotiations. Um, so until that is finalized with the new matrix and the old matrix, um, I will say that the proposal that, um, Ryan has put in front of you, regardless of how it plays out, I think it will still be within its budget.
Councilman Hoyer?
Just one more quick question. I mean, kind of speaking to the nature of, it can be a high-stress semi-traumatic experience sometimes as a dispatcher with some of those calls you get. Do we do any type of resiliency training, anything like that, to help these individuals be able to manage that stress?
Yes, certainly. In fact, um, we have a, uh, Critical Incident Stress Management Team whereby after some of these traumatic calls, even the dispatchers are allowed to attend along with the officers and the medics and, and any of the first responders. Um, you know, it's our frontline first response, trying to make sure that they're emotionally and mentally healthy and fit to go for work the next day and for years to come.
All right, anything else? I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item eighteen is Approval of Bids Received for Twenty Twenty Patrol Vehicles.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Lalum and a second by Holene. And I think, okay, switched out.
Kirk, I've asked Kirk to be the captain over the, our fleet, and we've had, we've got eleven mark patrol cars. And, uh, since he's come on board, he's come across some efficiencies. And so when the car bids come up, he puts specs together, he sends them out, and then I'll let him know, I'll let him, I won't steal this thunder here, I'll let him know how they came in.
So when we put the vehicles out for bid, we got notified by the Dodge Motor Company that they did a limited release of Dodge Chargers. So they only opened the bidding process for the Dodge Chargers for thirty-day window. If you weren't within that thirty-day window, you could not order or receive a twenty-twenty Dodge Charger with left, which left us with no option in, in the bid process. Uh, so I went to Kristen and said, we, we've been budgeted for three vehicles. Um, we'd like to switch it and get two Ford Explorers and one Dodge Pickup. Um, it's, Ford Explorers are about seven thousand, seven hundred dollars more than a Dodge.
and one Dodge pickup. Um, it's, Ford Explorers are about seven thousand, seven hundred dollars more than a Dodge Charger. And then you have a center counsel that comes with it, so we're asking for eight thousand dollars in supplement so we can continue with our three vehicles as planned, but we did move one to a Ford Explorer.
Right, thank you. Councilman Lalum?
Kirk, um, what's the reason for the pickup?
The reason for the pickup is we seen a need for it, so we're going to give it to our, we're going to have our sergeants drive it. Uh, we do have some trailers that we pull from time to time. We have some larger evidence items, stuff like that. Um, price point, to be honest with you, uh, the Dodge pickups are cheaper than the Ford Explorers. Uh, they're in that mid-twenty thousand dollar range, so they're, they're a viable option.
Just having that open box allows us opportunity to haul some things that we can inside of the vehicles. We do have a utility one that we use for pushing snow around, but it's not always available and it's not always the cleanest, so.
What do you envision, uh, like a, like a full cab, four-door cab type deal, or extended cab, or?
It'll be a four-door, uh, the bids we got is a four-door Dodge pickup, uh, with the Ram box for the storage on the sides. And it'll be marked like patrol, any other patrol vehicle. Um, it'll have interior lighting, not a light bar on top, and, uh, graphics and everything like that. So it'll be used for normal patrol. It's just it'll have some other abilities that we've never had before.
Councilman Y?
Just off of that, will it then be able to transport, um, detainees or, or arrested individuals or?
Perps?
If you need to ride home, Josh, we'll get you.
But, but will you be, if you arrest someone, will, will it have the whatever cage in it?
Yep, the pickup will have a half cage in it, similar to what we have now.
Uh, Councilman Albertson?
Uh, Kirk, is that a local purchase?
It is. Watertown Ford was our only bidders.
Councilman Hoyer?
Just to confirm too, every one of these is four-wheel drive, right?
Yes.
Correct. Good. Sorry, I had to make sure. Some trucks aren't for some weird reason.
Yeah.
Good. Then you can handle the snow.
Right.
Councilman Bueller?
You know, I, I, I look back and it seems like we had made a decision a long time ago. And, uh, the pickup's great, I understand that, but you were talking about Dodge Chargers. Didn't, didn't we decide some time ago we were going to go with, uh, SUVs?
We did, and that was probably prior to the Dodges becoming all-wheel drives. Uh, we had some that were rear-wheel drive at the time, V-sixes, but they went to a Hemi engine with all-wheel drive. And there's been some issues with those a little bit along the line too, but we have one left. And we're kind of hoping to maintain one car because there's some officers that prefer to drive a car. And we can swap the equipment, there's no additional cost. That was what we were going to try to do this year.
I'm just getting used to looking for those SUVs.
I know, right?
Anyone else? All right, Kristen?
Kirk, can you just go over with this authority to proceed when you would potentially be receiving the vehicles?
So when we spoke to Watertown Ford, if we ordered sometime this week or early next week because of the holidays and such, it'd be like April, May timeframe is when we'd be looking at all three of them, by the time they do build date and stuff like that.
All right. Councilman Hoyer?
So with that being that like a city purchase and going to police force, there's some sort of like rebate on that or anything, since we're in the holidays or?
Unfortunately, no.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
They're white?
All right, is there any old business? Councilman Robey? There you go. Any other old business? Any new business? Councilman Bueller?
Mayor, this kind of reminded me when we were speaking earlier about the Hesco baskets. Um, you know, at, at one point, we discussed kind of looking at the burms and, and throughout the community to see if there, if there were areas that, uh, we would be allowed to ex- expand, to extend. So in lieu of any, any new flood problems, that we would have that in place and not have to do as much of that. Is that something we've looked at at all?
We have looked at that, and that comes up every time. Uh, it's a good question. But where we can, we have. We've done it already, and the, now we're, we're kind of stuck with the regulations. Um, the locations that we end up raising temporarily are in locations that we can't permanently do it for one reason or another. But, I mean, we could do some things like floodgates on the road crossings if we, that's pretty expensive and, um, we haven't wanted to go there, but as far as just, um, getting those burms raised up where they're not in a road, that we've done what we can do. So, any other questions or new business? Any liaison member reports? None, okay. Uh, we do have a reason to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two to discuss and consult with legal counsel on contractual matters and personnel matters. Um, and we do not expect to take action upon coming out, so look for a motion for that. Not, not adjourned. Disregarding that. No, 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 nope. Okay, we have a motion by Y and a second by Holene. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay.